Twenty, thirty years ago. And we did the Disney thing. But my favorite part of the whole vacation was the Sponge Docks. Watching the ships, the boats come in, the fishermen come in, and they're throwing trout over, you know, and the birds are eating it up and buying fresh seafood.
Appreciate your attendance tonight. We'll call the meeting to order, and I'll ask for the invocation by Councilman Gross.
Let's pray. Father, we pause at this time to thank you again for another opportunity to serve the citizens of this community. What a privilege. I ask now that as we look at the agenda this evening, that we give a sharp minds, humble hearts, as we go through the business. In Christ's name, I pray. Amen?
Amen. Move the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you.
Surely, repetitious training works.
Pablo, we, tonight, we're actually testing our video streaming of our council meeting, just kind of working out bugs and setting levels on the audio and making sure it's working well. So it will be, it is actually being streamed privately tonight, and we're looking at the first meeting in April. We'll probably start our video streaming on the city website, so. Hence, the arrangement changes of our flags and a few of the other things, so. All right, let's jump into the approval of the minutes from the March nineteenth meeting. Had a lot going on that night.
Yes, we did.
Trust you had a chance to review these. Do they have any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Home, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? All right, again, like to welcome and recognize all our visitors. Paul, how are you? Okay. Let's move into reports, oral and written communications. Jeremy, any comments on the redevelopment commission report? I know, I hope you all had a chance to look through it. It was a very comprehensive report. Certainly, Jeremy has tried to put everything down, that all of our TIF districts and our tech park designation, all of the budgets and projects and future projects planned for those areas. Any comments, Jeremy?
Yes, so it's requirement of redevelopment commission to provide the city council with an annual report on the finances, money spent for 2017. So what you have before you is a report that goes over what was accomplished and spent in 2017. It also looks at what we're looking to do in 2018, so you can keep it in mind when budget time comes around, because it's actually spread out, or it's set up to give you about a three to five year span, depending on the TIF districts and the project list. It'll give you what we did last year, what we're doing this year, and then a look ahead to 2019 on what we have planned for the projects. The other thing it goes into is talks to you about the funding. The dollar amounts are in those TIF districts, because in June, I believe you'll be asked about a TIF pass-through. So this report serves as your report, your information on what we're doing, why we're doing it, and the amount of money and funds we have on hand and what we need to accomplish those projects, and why, when the time comes, there wouldn't be any TIF to pass through. And it goes through each district and explains the districts, the funding, the projects, and so forth. So if you have any questions, feel free to contact me. We can sit down and discuss any of the projects that are in there and the funding mechanisms to fund those, but that's basically what the report is. It's just a comprehensive look at 2017, what we're doing in eighteen, and then the future years of nineteen and twenty going forward.
Any questions? Did I just have a chance to look through that?
It's a well-done report.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Thanks for your work on that, Jeremy. Appreciate it. All right, let's move into unfinished business. Tonight will be the second reading ordinance 2018-0306. This is an ordinance that was presented at the last meeting, was voted on and approved on first reading. And I'll just turn it over to Councilor Quantz, who is carrying this.
Okay. Well, I know we have several people from the neighborhood that would like to address you this evening, but I appreciate all of you that took the time to drive out, to look at the property, stop and talk with the neighbors. Councilor will highly appreciate that, to kind of check into the situation. I know some of you have had conversations with other people, too, that you'd like to report on and share a little bit with the councils for making this decision. Maybe, do you want to start, Mr. Woolhite?
I met with a number of the residents out there a couple days ago, to make sure that I was getting all my facts straight, that, you know, what was being complained about was exactly, you know, I was hearing it from the horse's mouth, so to speak. I was, and I was actually somewhat taken back, shocked, that it was, it sounded worse than what I'd first heard. Sunset Drive is, it's, it's a quiet area, residential area, and it also draws, it has some features to it that draw people to it for fishing, for different recreational activities. And the problem that has arisen over the past, mostly the past year, because I did talk to our chief of police, and incidents have been rather significant over the past year. He stated that there were twenty-three calls in the last three years, seventeen of which were this past year, in 2017. And I asked him, I said, so was, you know, how does that compare to other places? He said, well, I can't think of any other bridge that we've ever had any, any problems with, or had been called out to. Some of the neighbors, which I think they'll, I believe they'll probably express some of the problems that they've had. The, when I was first looking into this, I thought, you know, if this was happening out in front of my house, or behind my house, how would I, how would I feel about it? Because people are going out there to fish, and they're out there until reportedly three, four in the morning. And when a neighbor, or somebody who lives there, has to put up with people outside their door, oestrus, cussing, swearing, playing music on a boombox, and they have, have to go to work the next morning at 5:30, or at least get up at 5:30, and they're being kept up through the night, that's a, that's a problem. I'd have a problem with that as well. And so I think this particular bridge, for whatever reason, good fishing, or whatever you want to say, has become a problem. I'm not sure that we have anywhere close to the same type of problem with other bridges. So I'm pretty much in favor of sticking with, with just the ordinance the way it was written. I know the chief says that the PD backs this, they support it, and I guess I'll just leave it at that.
And I also talked with Chief Whitaker, maybe just to piggyback. He did go through and check all the records today, and this is where they've had the most complaints. And it's not just been in the last two years, going back as many as five to ten years historically there's been complaints in this area. They've been able to enforce it, thinking that the code was up to date, you know, so they've been able to go out and do something about it, and now it's gotten to be a game of cat and mouse. The other thing I asked was, are we talking about an issue of trespassing on private property, or what's going on on the bridge? And he said unequivocally, it's what's going on on the bridge that is the biggest problem. Yes, they are getting into people's yards, but what is happening under the bridge is a problem in and of itself, regardless of whether or not they get on to anybody else's property, what's going on under the bridge. So I thought that was important information. Councilor Thomas, did you want to say anything?
I had the opportunity to speak with someone who had worked with the police department maybe five or six years ago, and this person said, dating back that far, that it was a situation where they had received quite a few complaints and everything. And I've taken the opportunity to kind of drive by pretty much every other day, but unfortunately, I did not realize that so much was going on in the middle of the night, and that's kind of a different ballgame.
Anybody else?
Do they also have conversations? I guess the only thing I would then just add is that I, you know, as I stated earlier, I worked with DNR as to what they felt comfortable enforcing, and they like our ordinance as it's written, they have seen it, and they feel comfortable that they also, if they were out, could enforce it, or if there were issues with boaters, they felt very comfortable enforcing what we have, and kind of following through on that, so that was comfortable for them. And then I sent you all a list of other bridges in the city, and I think we're all in agreement at this point, that we just want to deal with Sunset at this time. I asked Chief Whitaker his opinion, and he said, really, we don't get calls on the other ones, but we really need you to do something for us for this one. We need some help from the council, so. Do you want to say something?
I just had a question. This ordinance doesn't preclude anybody from taking a boat to the bridge and fishing?
No. The boat is on.
And this, this is not a no-fishing ordinance?
Correct. It's just stopping and standing on the bridge.
All right.
Did you just want to say something?
Yeah, I do. I've been out there, too, like Cindy has. I have driven by, haven't stopped, and it's not a safe place to stop, and I've observed people fishing there. It almost seems to me like we don't have a fishing problem. We have a problem with a few bad actors, if you will. And that's troublesome, and it's, that person, you know, if we, if we do something here, I, I'm hesitant to punish everybody, if you will, for the bad acting of a few people. And it's my understanding, there's one person in particular, and he happened to be on the bridge when this picture was taken, and ran in the Times Union. So we know who it is. And I've done a little bit of investigating, and he seems to think that he can do whatever he wants, because there is no ordinance, but if he's, you know, doing things on private property, I would think that there is a mechanism in place that the police could do something about him. I've spoken with a long-time law enforcement person, and he said there, there's things that the police can do to stop him from, from doing this. Another concern, piggybacking off of what Ron said, is, okay, we go ahead and say you can't fish off the bridge, what's to preclude somebody from coming up there in a john boat or fishing boat and doing the same thing? They're not on the bridge, but the situation is, is going to be the same. So at the last meeting, I mentioned, you know, I'd hate to not let dad take his son or grandpa take his grandson to the bridge, because I understand the fishing there is really great, best catfishing in town, because of this one person. He's known to the police, and I would like to see maybe him not allowed there, or explore some other ways to deal with the problem before we just go ahead and have a blanket coverage of not being able to use the bridge.
And in response to that, they spent several months here trying to enforce anything they could, A, and there is nothing they can do.
Well, there's, you know, trespassing, nobody should be under the bridge.
That's where they are.
Can we do something about you can't go under the bridge, or?
That's what this is. That's what the ordinance is.
But, but what about being on the bridge?
Well, I get it covers the entire bridge.
Right, right.
Yeah. The other thing I just wanted to remind the council that I brought up to you last time was the fact that we have a very expensive piece of equipment, which the city pays for, from the U.S. Geological Service, which I'm actually watching today on my app since it's predicting possible flooding, but that we've gauged the flooding levels there, and also the boards that are owned are there and have been vandalized before by people.
What are those boards?
They are on the southeast corner.
I know where they are, but what are they? The ones that run the land, they're like five or six, seven?
Right, and they are what are removed and added every year by DNR to control the lake level. So they have them chained right now and locked together, but they've still been vandalized.
I think no matter what happens, this ordinance, or what we do, that area needs to be fenced off from the road as a precaution. You know, there's, there's no protection to that piece of machinery, I mean, at all. Would that be possible to do?
Guess that's a question for you, whether we can fence public land.
I'd have to look at it. Have you get, crossing different government agencies, because DNR regulates, like, depending on what you have to fence, could be, have to get it from DNR. There's a lot of different regulations.
Sure.
And I think it's important to kind of stick to the issue here, and I understand the importance and cost of that equipment, and I know how important it was in the recent flooding, but I'm not sure that's germane to what you're trying to decide.
Well, it's on the bridge. It's, I mean, it's on the part that he included in the bridge.
Right, but as far as protecting it, this ordinance won't do anything that way. That's something we'd have to arrange with, with the DNR.
Yes.
So.
Well, I would like to do something to help the people. I don't know who out there is, is here because of that reason.
So if.
But I don't know that I want.
If you're all ready, if you're ready to hear some public comment, we're certainly able to do that now. If you wish to speak, I'd ask you come to this podium and just mention your name, and then just give us your, your opinion, so.
Don't be afraid. We're here to help you if we can, but.
Let me do this, Chris.
It's all right. I know, it's not fun, but we need to hear from you.
Mr. Clanderra said.
What's your name, sir? I'm sorry.
Oh, Mike Campbell, 110512 Bay Circle Drive, in the cul-de-sac there at the bridge. We've been here ten years. We moved here from Wallbush to retire. Mr. Clanderra, that is how you pronounce your name?
Sure. Works.
It's not just one guy down there fishing. If it was, we wouldn't be down here talking about it at all. There is a whole gaba people who go down there, a whole lot. If it was just one guy, we wouldn't be here. He wouldn't, we wouldn't be calling the cops seventeen times in one year for one guy. And he wouldn't be down there cussing and swearing at anybody either. But the other people who do come down there are kind of less than the people we have, good people we have here. They cuss, they swear, you don't want to hear the words that we have to listen to, let alone our grandkids have to listen to. You wouldn't like it if they were in their backyard, or even in your front yard, cussing and swearing and using the foul language. I was in the Air Force for twenty-nine years. I heard some of it there, but I don't want to hear it out my back door with my grandkids. And they just go in the house. I don't let them listen to it. My wife and I even thought about moving. I don't, I don't want to put up with it, and I'm not going to. I hope you can understand what that's like. I got a couple other things. Here, they leave trash down there, the bait boxes are styrofoam, they get thrown into the lake, they just don't disintegrate. The fish will chew on them and they will die. So it won't be the greatest fishing in the world down there much longer if that's allowed to happen. Plus, that looks like crap. And we have an association there that the first order of business is, when are we going to go out and clean up the, clean up the trash from the other people? Because if you live there, you don't do it. You don't throw trash in your guys' yard. But if I was there, I might be inclined to, if nobody said you couldn't. I hope I wouldn't, but you understand what I'm trying to say. As of late, there's been syringes found down there. I don't have to tell you what that means, you know, they're not taking flu shots. We don't want that. You guys don't want that. And one of my next-door neighbors told me that they found where they defecate down there. I don't have to go any further with that, I don't think. The issue with the trespassing, I have a letter here from the people who own that property that the cops say that they won't do anything about the trespassing, because we're not the homeowners, we're not the landowners. Does that mean if I see somebody breaking into your house, I don't call the cops because I'm not the landowner? We all take care of one another there. Hey, if I leave, watch out, watch out for my stuff, I'll be back in a couple days. They don't seem to want to do that. You're not the landowner, so I don't want, I don't care about that. Well, I have a letter here saying that they, it's, they don't mind us calling people, having the people removed from their land. If I go to, if I go to Fort Wayne, I don't want to have somebody come back and find somebody fishing in my backyard, because the cops don't want to kick them out, because my neighbor there called the cops and told them to leave. Now, the letter, as I understand, having read the, the code of 3543-2-2, is that this pretty much gives us their agent, that we can act in their stead if they're not there, because those people there live in Chicago. They're not here every day. They come down for the weekend. I guess that's about all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Yes, sir.
I live at 506 Bay Circle Drive. It is the house that is right next to the dam, and my bedroom window is probably, the code says twenty-five feet, I'm probably about thirty-five feet from the bridge. And often at night, I get waken up by loud people fishing or loitering on the bridge. There's a trailer park just down the road, and seemed to attract a lot of kids at night, during the summer, and on weekends. And I've been awakened quite a bit because of that. I know one night, I was awakened by somebody fishing, talked so loud. Now, you got to realize, sound carries over water, and they're on the other side of the channel, but that sound kept me awake. And after about forty-five minutes of listening to them, I called the police. They came out, and, hey, fellas, how you doing? You catching anything? Uh, yeah, I got a complaint. Somebody says you're just making too much noise. Well, who's complaining? Well, that guy right there. You know, I was appalled at that. It's none of his business who complained, it's his bad behavior that needed to be addressed. And of course, the officer talked to him for ten minutes and went on, and they went on, talking loud. Someone mentioned fishing underneath the bridge. We have a couple of people that fish under the bridge. They have boomboxes in their kayaks or canoes, and under that bridge, it concentrates the sound, and you hear everything that goes on under that bridge. And that, that's disturbing, especially in the late evening. We have a lot of littering going on. I think Mike alluded to most of that problem, the bad language. One day, I was out tending to my yard, and I looked across the way, and I saw, I heard a real loud noise, and I looked over, and it was one of the kids had picked up one of the old dam boards and thrown it under the bridge and broke the end of the storm drain And I do want to say, it's not about the fishing, okay? It's about the bad behavior. People in boats fish there quite a bit, but they're respectful of where they're at, they don't sit there and chat a lot, they don't, like, some of these people that fish off the bridge, if they catch a fish, it's like the first fish is ever caught in their whole life, and they want to celebrate, and they want to share that with me. I don't care. I don't care. And the individual you were talking about, he's a pretty nasty individual, carries a gun, you know, and that, that bothers me, okay? I believe, you know, you should have a right to own a firearm, and even to use it if, if necessary, but there's nothing going on in that, that lake, that, that area that requires someone to have a gun, you know, unless he wants to keep people away. I noticed in the picture, you'll see, he's got a holster with a gun in it. And that individual, he was, he went to talk to somebody, I don't know if it was the chief of police, or who it was, but they said, don't worry, you can fish there all you want. And I remember the day after that, I was sitting over in my neighbor's yard, and he'll probably tell you about it, too. He made a point of climbing over the guardrail, climbing over his fence, and walking on his seawall, like, na, 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 you can't touch me. And those are the kinds of things we have to put up with. That's all I have.
I have a question, sir.
Yes.
You said it doesn't apply to fishing, it applies to bad acting.
Yes.
Does this, does this ordinance resolve that bad acting?
If it keeps the bad actors away.
Okay.
And I have no problem with people fishing.
Right.
Other than their bad behavior. The worm containers that get left in my yard, the cigarette butts that go in the lake.
And they primarily get to your property by the bridge.
Yes, yes. There's four properties on there, and we have one neighbor, she, she, she isn't here tonight, she's like eighty-five years old.
Talk to her.
And she has a hard time dealing with it. I mean, you know, the guys think, oh, just because she's an old woman, that, you know, they don't have to pay any attention to her. That's it.
Thank you.
My name is Joni Campbell. I live at 512 Bay Circle Drive. You've heard my neighbor say it's not about the fishing, and I disagree. These fishermen come down there and they fish. Not only do they fish off the bridge, but they eventually get down, around into the neighbor's yard. We've had them in our yard, we've had to run them off. When they fish, they have long lures, and they put out their line. They have snagged our boat many times, and we just paid seventeen thousand dollars to have our boat refinished because of the snags in our, back of our seats, in our canopy. That's a big expense for us, so it is about the fishing. It's about the foul language. It's about the quality of the people that do come down there. We go out and we ask them to please quiet it down, and all we get is confrontation and threat. And all we get is confrontation and threats. The gentleman with the gun, he's threatening you with his hand on his gun, yelling and screaming at you. We have our grandchildren there. We don't need to tolerate that from anybody. This is our neighborhood. We live there. There are plenty of fishing sites on the lake. It doesn't have to be centered on that bridge. I am disgusted with the police not enforcing the ordinance that is currently in effect. I'm upset that we have to go out and clean up the mess. The beer cans, that shouldn't even be allowed. Drinking in public should not be acceptable in that area. They want to drink, let them go home and drink. Let them go to the bar and drink. They want to bring their children down? Their children play on the equipment that's down there? That's expensive equipment, and as a taxpayer, I'm paying for that. It's all hours of the day and night. It's any night. It's any day. It's any weekend and any holiday. Given it's not winter, it's in the summer, and in the winter, it's pretty quiet. We have the same problem with the boats that come down there, but not as much as we do with the fishermen that come down there, and they want to come on down, throw their lures out, snag our boat, tell us if they can do anything, walk on our seawall, and we can't do anything about it? We live there. We pay the taxes there. If somebody gets hurt there, we are the ones that have to pay for the injuries. And if they're down there and they get hurt, do you not think, not for a moment, they won't sue the city if they get hurt? Or if their children get hurt? I believe there needs to be a stricter enforcement of the ordinance, no fishing, period, off this bridge or off the neighbor's land. I feel very, very concerned about this issue, and I, I'm really upset about it. Our neighbors are upset about it. We've had to deal with this for ten years that we've lived there. Had we known it would have been a problem, we would not have moved to this area. It's a nice area. We like it there. We look out for each other. The Normans who are in their eighties are afraid to confront these people. They've told them they don't want them fishing in their yard, off their property, and yet they still continue to do it. So my concern is, please, address this issue in a way we do not have to deal with this anymore. Because we shouldn't have to tolerate this. That's why we have government officials and the police there to help us. And it's not for policemen to say, these people over here are complaining. It's for the policeman to say, you are trespassing. We have an ordinance that you're not abiding by, and we need you to leave. I don't care if they have to do it twenty times a day. It needs to be enforced. I thank you for your time.
Will this ordinance address your concerns?
I hope so. I hope so. My concern is, I don't, I don't want to see anybody down there for the reasons I've stated.
Part of the reason we're here tonight is because, and I'll have the city attorney address the fact that the ordinance that's posted down there is, is no longer on the books. That's, that's why the councilman and the council have come together is to get that ordinance back. That's part of the reason law enforcement, there's nothing to enforce at this point. Mike, maybe you can address how that happened and that, that was eliminated or deleted from the code at a certain point inadvertently, I suppose?
The, the original, there was an original ordinance back in the seventies and was in play, and that resulted in the signs that were published. Somewhere along the line, and I've been in this business since nineteen eighty-four. I don't ever recall ever having dealt with it. But somewhere along the line, that ordinance got swept up in others and, and it was voided and was taken off the books. It wasn't anything that jumped out and grabbed anybody. And then when this came up with the chief of police, they got to looking, and the chief called me and he said, well, the ordinance in there. And I looked and I said, well, I guess you're right. And so this is the attempt to reinstate that ordinance. I think the, the folks on the council, they wanted to make sure that the, the words were correct and we settled on this stopping and standing, which we think covers just about anything that could occur out there. No stopping, no standing. Now, somebody can walk over the bridge. That's what it's there for. But the stopping and the standing, it seems to me that it would give the, give the police more than adequate reason to be able to deal with those kinds of things. It's not a perfect world, and, but I think.
It isn't. And, and, but the police leave, they come back.
Yeah.
It is, it is a problem.
He will, I've talked with him today, and as soon as we can get something that he can do something about.
Sure, the problem has been there's, they can't enforce it. If they can do something, there's no law to, or no ordinance to enforce. And that, that's the wishes of the council is to reinstate, I believe. At least that's why the ordinance has been presented, to reinstate that ordinance.
And I'd just like to remind the council, too, that, um, our city planner went out and staked which was public property and which was private, and all of these homeowners have posted the note trespassing signs as I requested, because that was our first step to see if that would deal with it, and it's, it's not worked. So I just wanted the council to be aware of that, that they've all taken the steps that they can short of fencing their property. And I, I hope you'll talk, because you're the only one that has your property fenced, and it's not helping, so, yeah.
And then, you had a question, too?
If this is passed tonight, because it's subject to our general fining provisions in our statute, up to two thousand dollars per fence, we have to advertise it before it becomes effective. So if it's passed tonight, Lynn would, would publish that, what, it's thirty days out? What's the effective?
Thirty days after publication, after publication.
Yeah, thirty days after it's publicized in the, in the Times Union, then it's effective. So if it's passed tonight, we've, we've still got a delay period because there's a substantial fine that is, that's attached to this.
So it'd be advertised, if it's passed tonight, it'd be advertised sometime next week. I can't tell you which day because it depends on what day the paper can get it in to their classifieds. And then thirty days after that, it'd be effective.
And like I said, it's, it's, it does include the fishing. When you have a big expense to have to pay out because people are destroying your property, that's an issue.
Sure, sure.
And it's an issue none of you would want if it was in your backyard. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chief, I want to ask to the ordinance that, I guess that's where it is, right?
Yes.
It's being discussed here tonight. None of us have seen it. We don't, we don't know what it is. I don't know where they're.
Diane, you want to read it?
I don't know where they're.
I, I was understanding that you had a copy of it. Maybe Diane can read it. It's very short.
It says, "No person shall stop upon or stand upon the bridge at Sunset Drive in Warsaw. Its approaches are wing walls within twenty-five feet from the center line in any direction on or under the bridge located on Sunset Drive over Nance Creek and Valera addition to the city of Warsaw." So it's pretty short and direct and to the point. So obviously, I mean, it's difficult.
It's pretty simple.
It's pretty simple, and it doesn't say fishing in it because you can't stand there.
Can't stand there, can't stop.
Or stop there. So obviously, you can't be fishing, but you can't be doing other things like drinking or defecating or listening to your music.
They don't do that on the bridge. You do it on the winds.
Right, and that's why when I asked the attorney to draw it up, I said, this needs to be every part of the bridge because if you go down there, you're going to see them hanging off of every available surface on the bridge. Did you want to talk? Thank you for coming.
My name is Joe McManamal. I live on four eighty-eight Anchorage Road, and I have the chain-laid fence that they have to go over the top to get onto a little spot that's this big, and then it drops four feet down, and then they get on that, and that's where they start fishing. And then eventually, when I'm in the house, they go right on down the seawall. And then at night, there's, there might be two or three people out there. I'll run them off. My neighbor, who is Mrs. Norman, she's too old for that. I'll look out there. They'll have three, four lanterns at three o'clock in the morning out there. And also, there has been, uh, one of those police, my ex-wife called in, there was two Mountain Dew meth labs that she found down there. That goes on down there, too. And it's not, it, these people don't even have fishing licenses, obviously. Because you're not, you don't fish off a bridge like that. You got traffic. There's no sidewalk there. Also, his wife was a witness to, I stayed home one day, and I seen somebody walk by my window, and I was like, what's going on here? I walk outside, and I have a lighthouse out there, and he, well, you know about that dining table, and there's three guys eating lunch there, the fishermen. And I'm like, what are you guys doing? We eat lunch here every day. You do? While I'm at work. So I asked his ex-wife, I'm sorry, have you seen anybody over on my dining table eating? And she goes, yeah, there's like three guys do this every day, about noon or one o'clock. And I said, why didn't you tell me? She goes, I thought you knew them. You have a chain-laid fence that you have to open to get into. Yeah, it's like that all the time. And if it's not them, it'll be somebody else that sees them fishing, and then they bring their friends, and then the more trash, and then, yeah, it's awful.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, and Mrs. Norman, as a joke, they took fishing, uh, line and stretched it all over around her trees and her bushes, all over her yard. And she had to go out there and cut all that stuff up. I went over there and helped her, but we called, called the police on them. Nothing happened. They were long gone before they came. And they are not afraid of her.
You're not afraid of what, sir?
They're not afraid of her. Yeah.
Are they driving cars and parking along?
Yes, they'll park in his yard. They'll park in Mrs. Norman's yard. They'll park on the, yeah. Uh, they park up the street and.
They park along Anchorage, pull off?
Yes. Or they'll have these bicycles with flat tires. I've seen that. The bicycles that are laying there, then they just throw them in the, into the bridge. Because somebody had to dig them out because someone was fishing and caught on to it, and, yeah, it's not, it's all night, all the way. So there's some people that get dropped off there, and they're there for twelve, sixteen hours. So they're going to the bathroom. I've witnessed that.
Can you get pictures of that?
No, I didn't.
I say, could you get pictures?
Could I? Yeah, I could.
Yeah, and I would take care of it. Do it. And show that to the police, too.
But I just hope it gets passed because I'd rather not deal with any of it.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
I'd just like to add something to what he was saying. In my yard, when I first moved there in the end of two thousand six, people were parking in my yard, so I put concrete blocks at the edge of the yard next to the road. All about two months later, I was driving home, and what happened to my blocks? Well, you can go look for yourself. They're in right behind the dam. They just threw them in there.
Oh, and I forgot to add the ordinance sign when we called the police on them when they were down there. In the morning, the sign was laying in my yard, so we took it back out, set it down, so it's leaning like this right now.
All right, well, I assure you, if this passes tonight, we'll put a new sign up with the name of the effective ordinance, so. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, I'll throw it back to the council. You all have approved unanimously on the first reading. I think you've heard quite a bit of information. Diane, you've done a good job bringing this to the council. I don't think, as simple as this ordinance is, there's really too much to debate as far as the, the ordinance itself. It's just a matter of how you feel now on second reading, if you're prepared to basically reinstate an ordinance that had been intended to be there for some time and somehow got expunged.
You know, I think, I think we have an obligation to help these folks. I really hope this solves the problem.
Well, it gives us an enforcement mechanism because now there's an ordinance on the book, so.
So I move we pass oh three oh six?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I didn't realize.
You guys can feel free to go because you might be here forever.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you so much.
Get a good night's sleep, George.
I know this was hard. I appreciate you guys coming.
That's what we're here for.
You know, you did that pretty good for a public speaker that's worried about it.
I'm going to take that going if it stops.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thanks to the council for really looking into this and listening.
All right, let's move on to new business. Again, Lynn will advertise that. It'll take thirty days to take effect, and hopefully we'll be back in business, get a sign up there, and we'll have a reason to go out and enforce that, so.
You know, their, their testimony, if you want to call it that, was very compelling. I, I didn't realize it was such a horrible problem for them.
I think we'll probably have to address some other issues around this. I don't know if this is the stop.
Well, I think that's, that's probably the case with most things.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it was a good start.
Yeah, it's a place to start.
Where it was originally intended to be, so we'll kind of keep an eye on it, and I'm sure Diane will, will be made aware of any problems.
Actually, I can hear it clear down at my house, so, and we've also advised them. Mr. Valentine gave me some information, and then Rick Halm is in our Pike Lake Association, so he's given them specific steps to take as far as the civil side of it and what they need to do, so hopefully we can all work together.
All right. So we've got quite a bit of an agenda here to continue with. Let's start our new business. This is ordinance twenty eighteen oh one oh two. Tonight is a public hearing with regards to the annexation of, of two parcels of land in the airport industrial park. Land department and the city have been working tirelessly to follow the state guidelines towards annexation. And with that, I'll have Jeremy, Jeremy, I would ask that you give a council an overview of, of the process as far as what happens tonight with the public hearing and the remonstrance periods and so forth, and, and what we're looking at.
Certainly. So we held six public hearings back in December, and I, I had given this slide, and some of you may have seen it, so I'm going to go through it quickly. Most of the council members and the people that were a part of the annexation have certainly seen this presentation before, so I won't linger on it too much, but there are some key parts to it. So we started the annexation targeting the airport industrial park, but not knowing at the time exactly what would or wouldn't be in. A lot of it was dependent on the sanitary sewer. We are about thirty percent into the design of that sanitary sewer. We were looking at what, what it was going to take to sewer it, the cost, the ability to gravity feed areas versus force main. So that kind of ultimately would dictate what was going to be included in the annexation. The zoning, most of the zoning out here is industrial. There is one commercial property, and I think there's a few that were zoned agricultural. But the bulk of the, the area is zoned industrial, and that will be industrial, brought into the city as industrial property as well. Any agricultural property would be brought into the city as agri- Any agricultural property would be brought into the city as agricultural property. The commercial property would be brought into the city as its closest commercial category versus what the county zoning, uh, commercial zoning is. Uh, so it would be brought into the city a- as a comparable commercial zoning. Uh, the fiscal plan was presented to you back in February, which started the ball rolling for this public hearing process. Uh, that fiscal plan was approved, and this is just, kinda covers a, a brief overview of that fiscal plan. Uh, it is on the city's website, so anybody can go out there and look at it. But in general, you see the two categories, uh, non-capital and capital. Non-capital is your service, so it'd be your police, fire, street, and so forth. You can see the costs associated with the, uh, non-capital. The capital cost is associated with infrastructure, so that would be your water, wastewater, stormwater, and street improvements. Uh, the largest of this project, obviously, is the wastewater. We do not own water, uh, so we will not be extending water. Uh, it's privately held by Indiana American Water. We have made Indiana American Water's contacts available to the property's owners out here. Uh, so if they want water, uh, they can certainly work together and talk to Indiana American Water about receiving, uh, that service as well. Uh, but they would have to go through Indiana American Water to do that. The largest chunk of the cost is associated with the sanitary sewer. Uh, the intent, and we'll go into it a little bit here, obviously, is to fund that sanitary sewer with a bond issue uh, later this year, assuming the annexation is approved. So we are now at the public hearing portion. Uh, so the annexation would take effect sometime before the end of two thousand eighteen. Uh, the city has until the end of this year to complete this annexation. If it does not, because of the census, uh, the federal census, we will not be able to annex property for the next two years. Uh, the public hearing takes place in March. We'd adopt the ordinance in May, and then it would record sometime in October. Assuming that we complete the annexation process, uh, we've already started the preliminary engineering for the sanitary sewer. We would hopefully complete that engineering sometime late fall, uh, which would allow us to complete the annexation, expand the TIF districts, and bond for the sewer project. We anticipate ordoning the project in late two thousand eighteen, early two thousand nineteen, also that we can start construction as soon as possible, and hopefully have the infrastructure completed by the end of two thousand and twenty. It just gives you a larger area, uh, view of the area we're targeting, as well as some future areas that could potentially be serviced by the sanitary sewer system that we're, we're designing and will be installing. It's our intent to maximize the money we spend on this infrastructure, uh, so its service area would be larger than what we were currently annexing. This just gives you a preliminary view of what that sanitary sewer system will look like. It, I didn't update the, the latest drawings for the sanitary sewer, but it, it's pretty comparable to what you see here. The only difference is, uh, the red line heading west will most likely be gravity, but it'll be fed into the existing biomet lift station. Um, in order for us to, to hit the grades necessary to service that section of the annexation. So this is kind of a succinct timeline, uh, so this is the public hearing portion. Uh, May seventh, the annexation ordinance would be presented to the city council for approval. Assuming they adopt that annexation on the seventh, uh, we would publish the ordinance on the eighth and mail out the remonstration pro- notices, which begins the remonstration process. That process will include approximately five days for after hours. Right now, we're targeting the thirty-first, the seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth of June. We would have evening hours from five to nine available for the public to come in and, uh, sign that remonstration petition. August seventh, the period would end, which is roughly about ninety days. And then October twenty-fifth, if everything went well, would be the target date for the annexation taking effect. This is the final legal description outlining what the city is proposing to annex per the first public hearing tonight, which would be what I call parcel one. Uh, parcel two is the isolated parcel surrounded by the current city. That would have its own public hearing. So you actually have two public hearings. You have the public hearing for the large, uh, the majority of the parcels as part of the airport industrial park. And then you have a public hearing for the, the one property, uh, the Zen property there in the middle. So that's a very quick synopsis, but certainly, um, this is a public hearing, so uh, it'll be open to the public, and then they can speak, and I can answer any questions or concerns they may have.
So I'll, I'll turn it back to the council before we open the public hearing. Have you got any questions from that presentation? And again, Jeremy, I assume the expectation is tonight with the public hearing that there would be a vote in, in first reading. Uh, no first reading, just public hearing.
This is just the public hearing, yeah.
Right. And then there'll just be...
Just be the adoption of the ordinance on the seventh, yes.
Just one, one vote.
One, one reading.
Okay.
Jeremy, when a property is annexed, are they required then to tap into the public sewer once it's available?
Yes.
Is this part of our public hearing?
Is what?
Is this...
That, that was submitted to you, so yes, yeah.
Anybody else? All right. So I will open the public hearing with regards to, and this would be the annexation of parcel one, which is the vast majority of this, uh, this small property right here would be the second public hearing. So this will just involve the, the majority here. So if you come to the podium and state your name and list your, uh, concerns or support. We'll start with concerns, I think.
Thank you. My name is Paul Raveior. I also go by Rave. I live at three forty-seven North Buffalo Street, Warsaw. And I'm here representing the Kraus Trust, Roger Kraus Trust, and the Kraus Body Shop Business. Taking a look up there, uh, if you go along the, the north side, you see right almost in the middle is that tiny little square that's green that has been excluded. Yeah. All the way, both on the, the west, the south, and the east of that property is my client's property. And so the question is, why is the property for Monica Bremen excluded? And yet Kraus is included. I mean, I would like somebody to explain that to me, that there could be some reason for that. And then the other part, I noticed in the earlier, uh, renditions that the property owned by Glenn, which is to the, to the far right at the east side corner, that big block, that's a competitor of Kraus. And why now, it was in before and now it's out. And uh, it, it's just a real simple position as far as Kraus. And that is, he would prefer not to be annexed and to be treated like the Monica Bremen property, and to at least be treated as well as his competitors, the Glenn property there. Perhaps somebody can explain why those properties are excluded and Kraus is included. And that's really my only comments about this.
And, and certainly I can answer that.
Thanks.
Well, I can give you the answer. I'm gonna give you what might not be the answer you want, but um... When we first looked at this entire area, uh, we were targeting it, uh, to provide sewer to the bulk of the people that wanted it. But obviously, along the way, you're gonna cross people that don't necessarily want it. The initial map, just looked at the whole area. As we went through the preliminary engineering for the sanitary sewer, there was areas that were going to be very easy to sanitary sewer by gravity, and there's areas that are not going to be. Um, the bulk of that corner being left out there simply because we cannot gravity feed that property. The reason Kraus is in and is at Bremen's or not is because the sanitary sewer line will literally service this building right here, so it'll run right down the street. It will not, we cannot gravity feed over to the Brennan's property. So, uh, once again, we'd be looking at some low pressure system or, uh, force main in order to service their property, whereas the sanitary gravity line will be right out in front of Kraus's property.
Is there any particular benefit to having Kraus property in and what is different than Bremen property?
Yes, the sanitary sewer will be right out in front of Kraus's property. And we cannot gravity feed the Brennan property. We can't get the sanitary sewer there, but we can gravity feed up to this property.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Robert Bishop, uh, president of Casasco County Farm Bureau. And we are the owners of the Farm Bureau Insurance Building that is on two hundred or just off of two hundred. Right in there. I hope you have been observant. We just, uh, this past year spent, uh, a lot of money on that building remodeling it. And, uh, the Farm Bureau Board, um, added on to our boardroom and doubled the size of it for a cost of about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so... Uh, the questions I have, and the first one Jeremy already answered, I think, um, as far as the tap fee. Uh, I know the sewer's gonna go right by there. Is that right?
Yes.
And so it's my understanding that you're required to hook on. I believe I heard that earlier. And, um, what will be the monthly fee? Do we know that yet?
The monthly sewer fee would be based on your water usage.
So how does that measure?
Do you have water, or do you have a well?
We have a well.
Then it would be a flat fee, and I don't know what the current flat fee is, but...
So the tap fee is twenty-five hundred?
Most likely, you don't have anything over a two-inch wat-. I mean, if it's just drinking water in restrooms, then you probably just have a one-inch main, so yeah, it'd be twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, okay. And then, uh, I checked with a local excavating company and, uh, estimate about ten thousand dollars for us to hook our sewer up to that as well.
Yeah, we will, as part of the construction of the, the main, uh, we'll be, uh, providing the laterals to the property edge, and then it would be incumbent upon the property owner to connect to that, yes.
The property edge though is at the road.
Wherever the right of way ends.
I understand.
Yep.
And then the second, another question was the taxes. I saw the, where there's an abatement.
Yes.
Could you pull that slide back up, please?
Yes.
Okay, so the abatement is, uh, is that then starts off the first year that, uh, in two thousand twenty?
Yes, it would start off in two thousand twenty, um, assuming everything goes as planned. Uh, because we pay in arrears, uh, so right now you're paying for, uh, two thousand seventeen taxes.
Right.
Also, by the time this would take effect, that would be the first app- applicable year you would pay taxes.
Okay. And, and how mu- what would the tax rate be compared to where we're at now in Plain Township?
Um, it, it's roughly, what is the city's tax rate? One point two seven?
Yeah, the state's is one two seven.
Yeah, so it'd be roughly one point two seven higher, but depending on your use category, you may be capped at a different percentage. So some of the properties will be capped at two percent if you're considered, uh, um, there are certain categories. I'd, I'd have to look at it per se, but all of that is in the fiscal plan, so you can get online and see that.
Okay. On the city's plan?
Yes, on the city's website, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, you know, I, I talked to, um, a gentleman that used to be in charge of our, um, Harley chalk from Milford, who was, uh, agent in charge here for many, many years, and, uh, he was in favor of this. He told me about this over a year ago that it was gonna come, and, uh, you know, I don't think we're opposed to it. Uh, I just, uh, I'm glad to see that there's a possibility of an abatement. I think that's important to us as, uh, you know, our, our insurance business in this county is very large, and we bring a lot of business into this community. And so, um, I would just, uh, ask you to be conservative and think about all the people that are involved. I know the, the big businesses behind there are the ones that's pushing this project, and I understand that completely. And so, um, but thank you for your time. Anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else? Anybody else? Okay. We'll close the public hearing portion of this and just send it back to the council. Basically, for any more comments, with the understanding the timeline is, is in front of you. You'll be considering adopting this on May seventh.
Mayor, would it, is it correct to assume that once the annexation takes place and they become part of the city of Warsaw, that they would be included now in the Warsaw Wayne Fire Territory?
Yes.
And that could lower your insurance rates significantly because now you're in the fire territory? So there's another plus for you to think about.
Yeah. Uh, Plain Township right now is a primary service provider for that area. And if the annexation occurs, then the Warsaw Wayne Township Fire Territory will be the primary service provider. And the mayor is also a dual response area most of the time. Yes. Well, yeah, and we, I know we respond. You're exactly right. But I mean, to councilman's point, um, I think the insurance ISO ratings probably look at that. I can't tell you how much it's gonna save you. But I know...
I don't know what their ISO rating is. Ours is four.
Warsaw's four?
I believe so.
Uh, Plain Township will hire that.
Right.
Yeah. So you will probably see a reduction.
And that's because primarily they're a volunteer part of our member city, Warsaw State.
That's right.
But that worked on, when I was on the fire department of Leesburg for twenty-eight years, we worked on that. And I think they're still working on that ISO rating along with the city. The chief, um, and also with the chief of Leesburg. They've been working in the works for several years and still haven't gotten there yet.
The ISO ratings is...
It is, that, that is a, a plus.
Yeah, long-term.
I agree.
ISO ratings based on our equipment that we have, as well as the availability of water. Those are the two big issues in that, so...
There is, oh, excuse me, but there is already fire items out that way.
Yes, Indiana American Water does have. Let me go back to that map. Indiana American Water does have water out here. It actually runs down, I think it runs down here. Um, and one of these roads, and then comes along here, so yes, and...
Down there on...
And they might have it on, on two hundred as well. So they do have some, uh, infrastructure out here. Uh, the bulk of the infrastructure that they're missing is, is in this area here, uh, where we do have industrial manufacturers, um, that would like to have water. But, um, obviously, being a public or a private utility, uh, they don't have the same kind of rules and regulations that we have. Um, we're, we're footing the bill for the sanitary sewer. We're not charging the property owners, um, for that sanitary sewer. Your tap fee is not gonna come anywhere close to the, the six million dollars we're spending on infrastructure. Unfortunately, with a private utility, uh, you have to pay to extend the water. So, uh, they would have to build the water main and then tap on to it. Unlike the sanitary sewer, we're, we're gonna pay to build it, uh, and the tap fee that we'll generate, obviously, um, isn't gonna pay to, to build that line.
Yeah, there are water lines at one farm, and we farm right along there on the south side, two hundred. Water line runs right along the...
So they have quite a bit of infrastructure out here. Um, they just don't have it, uh, everywhere that some of the businesses would like it to be.
All right. Jeremy, I, I, I forget the, the tap fee. Is there a window or a timeframe for property owners?
Yes.
Once we have the line, it, what is that? I forget.
It's ninety days, I believe. It's 90 days, I believe.
So it's, it is a short time, okay, it's not a few years, okay?
And, and let me rephrase that, I mean, and it's up to the property owner. So, when I say they have 90 days to tap on, they don't actually physically have to tap on. What they will do is start receiving a bill whether they're tapped on or not. And that's the public utility portion of it. In that, we spend money to build infrastructure, because we're a public utility, they are more or less forced to tie on to it. They can choose not to tie on to it, but you're gonna receive a bill as if you're tied on to it or not. So it's still up to them to tie on to it, but they're gonna start receiving a bill for those utilities, one way or the other.
And then also, the second question, the two properties that you said are not friendly for gravity feed, the costs, infrastructure costs are just...
Yeah, it's...
That's the...
It wouldn't make sense to expend that kind of money to service one property.
Right, that's what I was thinking, thank you. Anyone else?
Once they're annexed into the city, if they are annexed, because they didn't be subject to stormwater fees too, correct?
That's correct.
So Jeremy's also presented the fiscal plan that you all approved back in January.
Yes, I did include that, so you can have that to reference as you were looking through.
That action's already been taken. So, again, it's my understanding that with this public hearing, there is no, no vote tonight, that the first vote will be for the ordinance on, is it May 17th?
May 7th, yeah.
All right, any, any other questions? And again, we're gonna go back through the same process for the second parcel here in just a second, but, any, any further questions? All right, then, hearing none, we'll move into the public hearing for ordinance 20180103. This is also pretty much the same annexation process and procedure involving just a very small parcel that, I assume because it's surrounded by non-city, it has to be treated differently?
Yes, it's just a, because it's not contiguous, it has to have its own ordinance and its own public hearing.
So again, I, I think if you have any questions with regards to that parcel, Mike?
My, my, the first thing comes to my mind is, given the answer that we just got for the property that sits way off, and it wouldn't be good business, if you will, to, to run a line clear up to one property. This property in question, it's not, it's surrounded by parcels that are not going to be in, is there an existing sewer line that runs through there now? Or is it going to be a, a big expense for us to, again, try to go to one property?
Well, we're not going to one property, we're going to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven properties. But, there is technically a sanitary sewer, it's a private gravity line that comes down, feeds into a lift station that then pumps into the gravity that then feeds into the lift station. So it's a little bit complicated, but yes, there is a, a gravity line. Unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to reuse that gravity line when we build the overall gravity system, so it's not gonna necessarily do us any good. But, in general, we're not servicing just him, we're servicing two properties.
No, but, you missed, I, I thought we were talking, we're talking about the next parcel. Yes, right there.
Now, what was the question?
Well, there's...
It's surrounded by city property which already has sewage.
It's actually already on sanitary sewer.
It is?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
So this is really just cleaning up a, in lieu of an annexation agreement we already had, but since we were already annexing all of the industrial park, and it made sense to do this, that property as well.
Any other questions for Jeremy before I open the public hearing? All right. So I will open the public hearing with regards to ordinance 20180103, and that would be Airport Industrial Park Annexation of Parcel 2. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of or in opposition to the annexation ordinance? Okay. Anyone? All right, I'll close the public hearing portion, ordinance 20180103. And again, before we move on, just ask the council if they have any further questions. Jeremy, I can assume that this ordinance will be voted on at that same May 7 meeting?
Yes. And Randy, I mean, I don't believe they're voting on the ordinance tonight. Yeah, it's just strictly the public hearing, yeah.
Is that a one, one vote, Randy, or...
Yeah, because you have a 90-day remonstration period. They would file documents if they wanted to remonstrate against it. It'd give, I mean, it's, it's a very convoluted system, but ideally, they get a 90-day period in which to, to remonstrate against it.
So we'll say that the, the state legislature in recent years has made this process very specific in, in having guidance from our, our council, as well as Jeremy's keen attention to all the details and advertisements for the six public hearings that we had. Again, this is all pretty much spelled out. So, again, I appreciate all the work you've done, and, and again, these are very fair, good questions with regards to this. So, anybody else? Okay, so, again, the fiscal plan for that small parcel is also included in your packet, so you can certainly approve that and just use that as reference. All right, thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll move on to ordinance 20180401. This is something we talked about, the rate ordinance, last, last fall, that we were committed to creating a summer credit for excess water usage. It didn't necessarily reflect wastewater usage. So, we have put an ordinance together, I've, I've talked to a few council members to get some guidance in setting this up. With that, I'll call Randy Rumpolo to, to introduce this.
Good evening, so we have Randy Rumpolo with Barnes and Thorber with offices in South Bend. As the mayor indicated, there was a lot of discussions, you recall, in connection with the adoption of the rate ordinance sometime back, to provide for a summer credit, a sprinkling credit, to account for increased water usage during the summer months. And so what this ordinance does for dwelling units is to provide for that. So, it amends the rate ordinance, doesn't change the rates at all, but it does say that during the period of mid-May through mid-September, that, and, and those bills, the way the billing system works, those bills show up through July through October. Property owners can choose to apply for the summer credit, if you will, so that they will be billed during those months based on an average. And that average then is, for 2018, it's based on November, December, and January, and for every year thereafter, it'll be based on October, November, December. The reason for the difference in 2018 is because we, as you recall, the timing of the rate ordinance, we just didn't, we didn't have the records for October. We had them from November, December, January. And I think we had some discussions about the timing of that, wanting to sort of get a fair comparison so that, to the extent there are snowbirds that may be leaving in, you know, January and not using, not being at home at all, it would skew the, skew the numbers, so we wanted to have that sort of fair comparison. Of course, if the water usage during the, that summer period, for somebody who maybe doesn't sprinkle, doesn't, you know, isn't using more water, if it ends up being less than the comparison, they would pay whatever is the, or more, let me say that right. If it's more, they would pay the, whatever the, whatever the going rate is. It is, we have it written so that owners do have to apply, if you will, in writing. The ordinance is vague in terms of what the writing will be. It could be just something that's on the bill, that somebody will check the box and send it in, and the billing folks will, I don't think that's been sorted out, but we didn't want to have to make it too difficult. But we also didn't want to make it simply a phone call, so that it becomes a he-said, she-said situation. I applied, no, we don't have any record of you applying, so... And it's a one-time application, so as long as you own the property, you apply, it would continue year after year. If there's a transfer, then the new person would have to apply again. So, I'm happy to answer any questions with respect to the ordinance, but that's, yes.
Now you say, I thought we was supposed to apply each year if they wanted that.
The way this is set up is, it's just applying one time.
Our original talking, we was going to make, have them apply each year.
Yeah, I think, I know, and...
Well, there was, there was discussion amongst a lot of folks, and some felt that one time would be okay, others, and I know, Jerry, I know how you felt. We did talk to Rebecca at wastewater payment, and we tried to model this after an existing ordinance, and we tried to incorporate best practices. Certainly, you can change it if you'd like, if the council feels that, that people should apply annually for this. I know Randy put in, that if a new owner takes over the property, they, they have to reapply. So, I guess that's where we're at right now, you can certainly, as a council, make that decision. This is our starting point.
I think it was from an administrative burden from the billing department, so that you're not having to sort of redo that every year, and sort of an inefficiency in the, from a billing standpoint, and...
Well, I was kinda understanding that it wasn't really much of a problem for them to do that. All they had to do is click a little key, and it was done.
Right, well, it...
Well, that's certainly open for discussion as we consider this, and, and, you know, I think it's important that the council weigh in on that. I mean, that was one of the, probably, as, as basic as this is, you know, this is an ordinance that has been patterned after many, many communities. So, there are a few details, what's your base period, you know, do we go three or four months? For our summertime period, we decided four. And the base period, I think we made good sense on the only, that was really the only decision to make, whether you apply annually, or whether you apply as a homeowner. And certainly, we can hear from a lot of folks, but I, I do remember that discussion with you, Jerry, and I know that's, that's how you felt, so...
Well, I think that's the way, if I'm not mistaken, Kirsten does, they have to apply every year if they want the...
So Randy, then, tonight will...
Tonight is, this is just up for first reading, because you are amending the rate ordinance, it does require a public hearing, so then, what we anticipate doing, you could choose to amend the ordinance if, if the determination tonight was to change it so that you had to apply every year, you can have that discussion tonight. But the actual ordinance itself would not be considered for adoption until the, the second meeting in April. We'll publish a public hearing notice, there would be a public hearing that night, and then you could consider it for adoption. You certainly could defer that decision in terms of the application until that meeting as well. Either, however you wanted to do it.
The idea was to try and get this done by the end of April, so we had an opportunity. We told, when we were doing this, that this was a priority for us, and we, we're making good on that. So we need, we need to have that discussion, figure out what you want to do. So no vote tonight, just introduction.
Correct.
All right, now, I'll open it up to questions.
Is, is there a window in which you have to apply? I don't see anything.
We didn't include that, because I think the thought is that, that it would be triggered by, you know, the city will presumably, within the bill, will, will indicate it's, it's time to sign up. And so we kind of left that studiously ambiguous in the ordinance, so that, from a billing standpoint, they can include the information in the bill, tell people it's time to apply, and people then would respond by applying.
Just curious.
I, I talked with Rebecca as well, there's a lot of folks that, that pay online, and there could be a checkbox on the online payment window as well. So...
Good, good.
We certainly, Rebecca was a part of our discussion to see what our software could handle. Their software's set up to do exactly what we're trying...
Right, I, I will say, I know Jeff Rao from Umba and myself talked to Rebecca at length about making sure that what we had in the ordinance reflected what she thought was doable from a billing standpoint.
I guess I like that, because what, if you're, if you're gone, you have, miss it, yeah. Why should you not be able to take advantage just because you missed an artificial deadline?
And I think, I will say, just in other communities where, I am familiar with, some communities do have that annual requirement. Other communities take the view that it, it becomes a bit of a gotcha, I've just simply forgot to check the box, and all of a sudden, I'm, you know, as a property owner, I'm, I can't do it this year. And so, you know, it, it becomes a question of, you know, how easy is it? And, you know, do you worry about people being upset because they wanted to do it, but they just simply forgot to check the box, or forgot to send in the notice, or whatever?
Randy, did I read something here about being retroactive, it's not retroactive, if somebody forgets and doesn't, it doesn't, was that in here?
Right, it is, it is.
All right, so that answers that as well.
And it doesn't create any problems billing-wise, since we'd be starting from mid-month?
No.
As I understand, and that was a Rebecca, because I, I asked that question just in terms of how, the timing of the metering from the Indiana American Water, that's why you see the, you know, it, it's the billings in January, February, and March, and then it's the, you know, the prior, the, or the timing of when the bills are, like, mid-May to mid-June, it's then the, the July bill, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, we asked, that was the first thing, because we weren't initially sure whether the billing department could handle mid-month billings. But this allows a four-month period, which, which I think is reasonable. So, and I, I hope you do, too.
So, walk me through this, just to make sure I'm thinking correctly. So somebody doesn't have an automatic sprinkling system, and then they decide to install one, then they would probably want to apply for this credit, because they might be using more water, for instance. If they take out a sprinkling system, it won't really make a difference, because they would still be charged either the average of those months, or the current month's water usage, whichever was lower, correct? So the same thing would happen if somebody either had a swimming pool installed, or they filled one in. It wouldn't make an issue, because, again, they're gonna either get charged, if they applied for it, and then after that, they fill their swimming pool in, or they dig the swimming pool.
Right, I think I understand what you're saying, yes, yes.
Just based on usage, if there's not a spike in the usage, it, it really doesn't apply.
So it really doesn't matter, yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking through, like, how a property could substantially change.
Yeah, it, it would be based on the actual water usage then, if it's, yeah. I mean, the issue would be, to your point, I suppose if somebody installed a sprinkling system in July, and the time period for applying, and that's where I think, you know, we wanted to leave the flexibility in the ordinance, so that from a billing standpoint, somebody could come to the billing department and say, I, I wanna opt in. And that would be something, again, from a billing standpoint, if it's easy enough to do, I presume you would want to do that, you know, to allow that.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, I mean, 'cause I can think of a property owner on your street, Jeff, who had a swimming pool filled in, and when the property was full, so that might make a substantial difference to what they did, I was just trying to think that.
I do believe also that this, this favors the, the residents, the users. I mean, this makes common sense, whether I have a swimming pool or not, my kid's playing outside, there's a lot of water in the summer that doesn't go into sewage. And so I think common sense would be, whether I have a pool or not, I want to sign up for that credit, because I will get the summer credit, and if my water use doesn't go up, kids aren't playing in the hose anymore, I'll still get the, what the regular use is, and that's what we're trying to do. What you use, you pay for, that's the idea. So I, I do like that, if I'm making sense.
No, that's, I, that's why some people refer to it as a sprinkling credit. When I've done these ordinances, I refer to it as a summer credit, because it is just a function of, I may not have a sprinkling system, but yet I may water my grass one day a week, or I may, I may water my garden, or my flowers, or as you say, kids may have a slip and slide. And so you may just sign up for it, just because you're using, you're washing your car. You don't wash your car in January as much as you do in July, outside, at least at home, maybe. So, you would think more people probably would sign up for it in that respect.
Randy, would, would you address, I know there's some questions about if there is a leaky pipe, and there's a spike in water usage from a leaky pipe. We had the discussion whether to include it in this or not, and we first asked Rebecca, the, the number of those instances are very limited. And you had an, an answer as well.
Yeah, and I can't remember what my answer was then, but I guess, my answer would be you can't legislate everything. And I hope it was close then, but, but I think the city, you would always have, a homeowner or property owner would always have the ability to come to the city and say, I had this incident happen, and have the city address it, you know, on a, on a one-on-one.
Which is what we've done in the past. You know, they just kind of show the spike, and, and then the circumstance, and typically, that's it, we certainly take care of it.
I think, Mike, you may have to help me out with this, but if I go to collections and they disagree with me, I've got 10,000 more gallons, and you're disagreeing, I can walk in here, board of works, public, and I can make my case, so can the sewage collect.
Right, that's, yes, there's an appeal process.
There would be. Okay, yeah, which, good.
I guess it goes without saying, but obviously, if you're on a flat rate, you would, this doesn't apply, no.
Anybody else? Michael?
I don't see anything in here that differentiates between dwelling units and, and commercial. Did you guys talk about that? For example, if you had a business that used a lot more water... in the summer than you did in the winter, but yet it was still going down the drain to the sewage plant.
It's in the title, seventy-eight dash one fifty-five meter domestic, non-domestic, or other uses.
Yeah, but it doesn't say dwelling units or...
The, well, the credit is in paragraph B, and that only relates to dwelling units.
Paragraph B.
So it's, the seventy-eight one fifty-five is the heading for the, basically, the flow charge rate for all users, domestic and non-domestic.
I read it and read it and read it, and I didn't see it, but now I see it. Okay.
No, it's, yeah, and dwelling unit is defined elsewhere in the rate, in the code, to include just residential.
And Rebecca and I have talked about coming up with a form that we can put online as well as if we're available at their office for people to fill out for when they want to ask for the credit.
Like I said, the software is designed, the software is, many municipalities that use meter sewage rates have the same software, and Rebecca said there's no problems doing this, so... Anybody else?
I like it.
Randy, any parting comments?
No, I have none.
All right. So then we'll consider this.
We'll publish the notice, and then it will be up for adoption on April sixteenth.
You all good?
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to know the timeline. That's what I'm looking at.
Very good.
I will say, April first is on, Easter is on April first this year, so hopefully those of you who have kids and grandkids can figure something out. I did see something online, I'll take 30 seconds. If you take, you know, the Hershey eggs that are the chocolate wrapped in the foil, unwrap the foil on some and wrap grapes around the foil, so. That's my tip, so, all right.
That's why we pay you the big bucks.
Yeah.
Thanks, Randy.
We have everyone.
That's good, that's right. No, no vote tonight. All right, let's move on to ordinance twenty eighteen oh four oh two. This is, state statute allows Park Treasurer's Office to list payments that can be made to avoid penalties and late charges outside of the Board of Works. They do come to the Board of Works, but they give her a timing advantage so as to avoid late payments. So I'm going to let Lynn present this and answer your questions on that.
Yes, so did you guys have a chance to read all of the information I presented to you? So we've come up against a couple of times where the payment for our credit cards are being paid right up to the time they can be paid, or maybe a day later, so. And then we get finance or interest charges on the next billing. And we ask for those to be taken off, but we can't keep asking that because the companies keep saying, you know, "Yeah, we'll do it this time, but no more." So I put an example here where we got, like, our Visa billing, and we received it on March nineteenth, which was three days after the March sixteenth Board of Works meeting, and it's due April seventh. So our next Board of Works meeting is not until April ninth, so it'll be late by the time we get it approved to pay it. If we don't get this approved tonight, it'll be late. And then, as another example, a few days, we have another credit card bill due, like, I think it's April ninth, that we have to mail that. So by the time it's approved, well, I'm sorry, April eleventh, so by the time it's mailed on the ninth, it's still going to be late getting to the destination, which would then incur the finance or interest charges. And then the point comes to, well, who actually, if we can't keep asking for those to be eliminated or excused from our billing, then who does pay for those finance charges? Because departments have done everything they're supposed to do to have their claims and everything in on time for the payment for the Board of Works. So that's where we're at, and so I'm asking for your consideration to add credit card bills to our list of pre-approved claims that we can go ahead and pay before the Board of Works meeting, when they would be approved.
So Lynn provided thirty-six four eight fourteen, and item thirteen under B, I think, is where this falls in for you all, and that's expenses described in an ordinance, and she has done that up in the ordinance, twenty eighteen oh four oh two, as Q, which is essentially, this is an amendment to the... Yes.
Yes.
And I think you provided down at the bottom all of the...
Yes, I have.
Pre-approved claims.
Which was ordinance twenty-seven, twenty...
Back in two thousand and seven.
Twenty-seven, twenty-two, and two thousand and nine eleven.
Amendment, yeah.
So I thought you guys would be interested in knowing the process, so I came in and met with them. And so, no credit, nothing is accepted for the credit card if it's not accompanied by a receipt, and that has to have the prior approval of whatever, you know, like if they were traveling somewhere, then it would have to have a travel request that it had already been approved to pay up to this amount, so that there wouldn't be anything that could slip through there without an actual receipt that met the requirements.
An itemized receipt.
An itemized receipt that met the requirements, because I thought that might be something you were concerned about, so I came in and checked on that.
Yeah, we audit those all the time. And sometimes there are overpayments or something that's on a credit card that shouldn't have been put on a credit card, and we make the employees pay.
Also remember that the Board of Works still has to allow that claim, and that's in, again, listed thirty-six four eight fourteen, and it's next regular or special meeting following the pre-approved payment of the expense. So that's all, another safeguard and check. And that's part of the local ordinance as well. It's all adopted after this, thirty-six four eight fourteen.
I ran by Councilor Gross, since these are represented to the Board of Works, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, the thing related to what the mayor just said, and I had talked to you, that it would be important to me like it's always been before, when unique and rare situations like this have come up, that we would still stay true to the Board of Works. It will be public. It isn't like it's going to be sliding around, going places nobody knows. Public before somebody's going to do something, they have to get approval to go do it, and then it will be public again. This, again, is a great example of the timing issue, the age we live in, and the Board of Works meeting or not meeting at the appropriate time where we can do the business of the city, serving not only staff, but also the taxpayers.
Well, I certainly wouldn't want us to pay the extra fees in order to get a reputation for paying late, so I would move to approve ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash zero four dash zero two.
I'll second that. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So with unanimous approval, you do have the option of suspending the rules. I'll leave that to you, and hearing it on second reading.
I think since we have two payments due in the next two weeks, that we should suspend the rules. So I'll make the motion to do that.
I would second that.
Okay. And again, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you. Lynn, thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, let's move on to resolution twenty eighteen oh three oh three. Essentially, the AIM Medical Trust, who manages our medical insurance for our city employees, that trust was formed in two thousand and ten with ten municipalities. It's grown to forty-three municipal members, covering over thirty, almost thirty-four hundred lives with assets of $27 million. They paid claims last year, $43 million, and they are regulated by the Indiana Department of Insurance. With this pretty phenomenal growth that's occurred in the last eight years, it's been, it was important, from a legal perspective, to change the agreement that the AIM, at the time was the IAC Medical Trust. And a big part of the changes is just to change the name from IAC to AIM. But there are also changes in there that expand the Board of Directors, based on the greater number of members, and there's also disposition provisions. There's always been a means to dissolve the trust, but there was never anything spelled out how the assets would be liquidated and spread amongst the members. So that, all of that has been put in this. I provided the red line for you so you can see what the original was. AIM Medical Trust is just asking the council to approve this resolution, update this resolution, and approve that. So with that, I'll take any questions. All right, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen oh three oh three?
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Jerry, is her second?
I'll second that.
Second by Cindy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you. I'll pass that along. Jeremy, we've got, again, tis the season, we've got some CF one compliance review forms. I do want to take these individually, so we'll start with West Hill Development, Patrick Industries.
I can just start with YMet, since it's been sitting here the whole time.
Yeah.
Yes, it is that time of year, so you'll be seeing quite a few of these over the next month or so. The first one is the property, or is the building Patrick Industries is utilizing, so it's for real property, not personal property. We did grant Patrick Industries a personal property tax abatement, but that won't take effect until they purchase the equipment. My understanding is they will be operating out of there pretty soon, but that, those taxes probably won't occur until next year. So this is for the shell building that we built a few years back. It's good to see it occupied, and the investment's already been made, obviously, almost four and a half million, so I would recommend continuing that tax abatement.
And this is just for the real property and not for the personal?
It is not for the personal property. Patrick will probably, I'm working with them. I don't know that they're going to have any taxes, because we pay in arrears, so the tax abatements, technically, they're filing for this year or for next year's taxes, which are pay eighteen, because they don't occupy the building or not operate now there yet. I'm not entirely sure they're going to have any personal property to be abated next year, which would be eighteen taxes. So they're filling out their forms and letting me know, but you may see a personal property from them, but you may not. Just depends on whether or not they have anything that's taxable this year.
Question? Is there a motion for a move, CF one compliance review for Patrick Industries?
So?
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next one is West Hill Development LLC, Banner Medical.
Yeah, so for this one, you do have both personal and real property. They're the next two. You have the twelve ninety-five Polk Drive West Hill, which is the building. They spent roughly five point one million on the real improvements, which were the building. And then the second one there is for personal property, which Banner Medical spent roughly two point seven million in personal property and hired, have hired twenty-two employees since, starting there in mid-two thousand and sixteen. All of the dollar amounts invested in employees hired meet the requirements, or the guidelines that we have for a ten-year tax abatement. Obviously, Banner Medical's still getting up and running, and I expect them, that they'll be hiring more people over the next couple of years, but certainly, they have met the dollar amounts and the hires that they were needed to be granted that ten-year tax abatement. So I would continue those abatements as well.
Do you want to take both of those, Banner Medical and Banner Medical?
Yeah, typically, because they're lease properties, typically, the real and the personal property go together as one, so you can take them as one or separate. It doesn't really matter, but...
All right, so we'll consider both of those. If you've got any concerns or questions?
Jeremy answered my question.
All right, is there a motion to approve the CF one?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And finally, YMet?
So YMet, they're in their eighth year of their ten-year tax abatement. Originally, they had anticipated adding fifteen jobs. They've added twenty-one new employees since they made their investment back in two thousand and nine. They invested the dollar amount, roughly three quarters million at that time, so I would certainly also recommend continuing their tax abatement.
Comments?
Well, thank you. Going very well. Of course, we actually did see equipment outside of this, and we're very excited. We appreciate your support.
That's good.
Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it.
Yes.
All right, questions?
None.
Is there a motion to approve the CF one?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a say aye? Are opposed? All right, thank you. All right.
You did a medal, Chad.
Really? How come your sister didn't come tonight?
Yeah.
Where's Lori?
She's under the weather. This is her exciting day, but she had to miss it today. Give her your best.
Thank you.
All right. So item number seven is a presentation of an annexation petition. This is a voluntary annexation. Jeremy, I'll let you take it.
Yeah, so this would be the first step in a voluntary annexation, or what we typically refer to as a hundred percent annexation. The petitioners would bring a petition before you stating that their wish is to be annexed into the city. You have all the petitioner's signatures, and I've double-checked that with the maps that are in your packet, so you see the area that is proposed, or they're requesting for your consideration for annexation. This subdivision was built back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, somewhere in that timeframe. We did service it with sanitary sewer, but we did not have contiguous property at the time to complete the annexation. Now, we do have contiguous property, and they are obviously petitioning for that annexation. This starts the process. Technically, you don't have to do anything. You could actually sit on it for sixty days, and then they could file a petition with the court, but obviously, it's in our best interest to do what we need to do. So we'll do an advertisement in the next thirty days. We'll probably be targeting that May seventh date to actually have the public hearing for it and the ordinance presentation, so that'll give you a timeframe for what we're looking at.
Jeremy, would you give a little bit of history of the existing sewer out there and potentially the splitting up of that subdivision, why some are being considered somewhere?
Yeah, so the first, the first section of that subdivision was done prior to the remaining subdivision, but it was a non-disturbed land. So the way the county does septic permits, they will grant septic permits for property that haven't been disturbed, but if the property's been disturbed, then it's, they don't grant septic permits. Because that subdivision had been mined for material at one point in time, the ground had been disturbed, and therefore, would not have been allowed the septics. So they had come forward to us wanting to be annexed in at the time to do the subdivision. We did not, there were some parcels and property in between. That really prevented us from doing a hundred percent annexation at the time, but we did provide them the ability through an in lieu of annexation agreement, which basically means that they would not remonstrate in the future to complete that sanitary sewer project. Since that time, obviously, we've got Bela Gusta that's being developed that borders what would be the west side of this property. So now, we do have contiguous property to complete the annexation.
Questions?
So is the only not, it would be no more capital expenses out there for us, or just be the non-capital to please fire?
That's correct.
Following street maintenance? And are the streets up to the standards that we...
Yes, the subdivision was built to our standards with the anticipation that would be annexed in. Unfortunately, at the time, the contiguous property was an issue, so we decided to do the in lieu of annexation and wait for the time for once there would be contiguous property to annex it in.
Something else considered, state legislatures, legislators are looking at annexation waivers and potentially putting an expiration on those. So, again, this is, I think this is very timely. And again, with the contiguous property waivers that are in place, this makes perfect sense, and appears that there's no remonstration on this.
That's correct.
And then explain one more time for me. I think I missed the reason why this, the ones in why they don't already have sewer. Is that the issue, or why are they not?
They were, they were granted septic permits because they were undisturbed property.
Okay, so they have septics and they don't want to be annexed?
They, they, some of them may, but we did not... They, they, some of them may, but we did not ask them. Basically, the, the people that have sanitary sewer now, I had a conversation with them about the in lieu of fees and, and the rates. They had requested what their options were, I explained the options for completing the 100% annexation. If they were to get all the signatures, we would annex them in, and then their in lieu fees would go away, so they would no longer pay in lieu fees. They would just pay straight taxes as everyone else does, and they would get the trash pickup, which they don't get now. So when you factor all that in, it really almost becomes a wash for a lot of them, because they're not paying for trash pickup. So while their taxes may go up a little bit, they get the, they get the advantage of the, the city trash pickup.
The only thing I'm asking is just, I think, in a practical standpoint, so the plow's going to plow up to this house and then stop, and the fire truck can come here, but not the house across the street.
Well, yes and no. So that, Jeff will, Jeff, we have plenty of agreements with the county, because obviously there's, there's all kinds of roads that one stops halfway and the other half, or one half, one side, so it'll be up to him to enter into that agreement of who plows what. As far as the fire service, I'm, I'm guessing that we have a cross-agreement with this as well, so while in some cases we'll be first responders, other cases we will not be first responders, but we will still have a cross-agreement to provide service.
Jeremy, is that Wayne Township?
Is it all Wayne Township?
Yeah.
So they're already?
Okay, yes, it is, it states it on the petition, so fire territory is.
Already covered.
All right, any more questions? Certainly you'll be seeing this again, but tonight is the introduction of that. Any other issues tonight?
Oh, one question I've been asked, do, have we advertised the city hall, it's been officially advertised?
Yes, it was advertised, yeah.
Okay.
That's what the statute is on, whether it offers interest.
Yes, it was advertised twice, I believe, per the statute, and then the, the bid period started Monday, so as of this Monday was the first time someone could place a bid.
Are we going to put up for sale signs on the building itself?
I am, I am. We haven't got them yet, but we're going to get some for sale signs, and then we're going to, we'll put them up.
Jeremy, excuse me, but is it bids will be open on April 2nd, or was it March 27?
It opened this Monday.
Okay.
Was the first time you could place a bid.
Okay, so that would have been March.
Yeah, not a, it's not a bid opening, it's placing, it's open for someone to come in and place a bid on it. And then 60 days from that time period.
Anybody else? All right, visitors, questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question.
Kyle Babcock, Joe, you brought something up in the session about AIM, and when it was, you know, the IAC Medical Trust, and I remember Jeff, you were on the council then, Joe, you were on the council, and so was I when that was set up. And I remember when it was initially set up, there was concern about not quoting local for the insurance on that, because it was small at that point, and Warsaw was a key participant in helping launch that IAC investment, or the insurance trust. And I can remember sitting next to you, hearing Jeff, we kind of had a, an agreement at that time that, you know, hey, we're going to do this, but we're going to quote this thing locally, you know, we want to help get this set up, so my question to you is, I, I know you sit on the AIM board, there's 42 participants now. Are you quoting the insurance to local people, because, you know, we, we talk about buy local, shop local. Now with the trust, as your words, having 42 participants now, Warsaw isn't necessarily needed to subsidize, or I don't know if subsidize is a good word, when it got started, because it was, you know, if you remember right, I think there was eight or nine, maybe 10, but it has grown. So my question is, are you quoting the insurance, because I know that's a prerogative of the mayor, you know, to do that, are you giving local people the opportunity now, eight years down the road, to quote the insurance, are you automatically just renewing this with the medical trust each year?
The medical trust is, is an insurance risk pool, and we share a risk with other municipalities. Always in the past, we had been self-funded, and our, our experience were wild swings in our renewals. And we've kept well under medical inflation for the eight years we've been in the trust, and felt that, I think this year was like under 5% in the face of 11, 12% medical inflation. So we were required to stay with the trust, I believe, for the first three years, and we've, we've just continued with the trust as a, as a means to, to watch our, our rates and our renewal rates.
Well, I, I was just going off what you said, there's 42 participants in it now, and I wondered if it was going to be, I, I think that's great, you've kept it under to help the city, help everybody there, but there are local places, because I remember our original benefit place was in Columbus that we dealt with, I don't remember the name, but I just wondered, there are big insurance companies and agencies in Warsaw that do this, and I wondered if they were having an opportunity now to come in and quote on this for the city insurance, or you'll just automatically, since you're on the board, just kind of renewing it?
Well, it has nothing to do with me, with me being just on the board, Kyle, it's the fact that we've saved our taxpayers a lot of money in the face of a very uncertain time. Obamacare has, has created a horrible situation in, in the market, and there's quite a bit of stability within the AIM Medical Trust. That obviously is, is a big factor, and, and saving money in that medical trust, not having to go out, self-insure ourselves, which is what we had always done in the past, it was, it's a, it's a responsible thing to do, it has nothing to do with me being on the board.
Well, I mean, I was a 10-year licensed agent, and I just wondered, are you quoting it, or are you not quoting it?
I don't understand it.
Well, are you, are you, every year, are you just re, are you renewing it each year with AIM, are you allowing local businesses to come in and quote the insurance? Simple enough question, yes or no?
I don't understand the question, Kyle.
So, okay, that's fine, thank you, I'll, I'll ask it again, I'll rephrase it another point, thank you.
Well, I mean, we are in the medical trust, and we are given a renewal rate every year, that renewal rate is well under medical inflation, and, and we choose to stay with the medical trust.
Okay, but, so you're not quoting another place, you're just renewing it each year without a competitive quote?
I think the council just kind of made a statement tonight that they approved our, our agreement with the medical trust. So I, I suppose we could ask everybody what they think.
Well, I just think that it's, you know, it should be quoted, we quote the streets, we quote, we quote all kinds of things in the city, we talk about buy local, and I don't think it's wrong to quote some things every once in a while. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I, I just have a quick question on the credit on the sewer.
Yep.
I'm in a flat rate place, so there's, doesn't affect me, but if I'm in an addition where I, I'm on a rate base, and I apply for my credit, is there a place where it bottoms out, like, would they get, you know, the cheapest they can get is what us flat rate players pay?
It, no, it's a base rate based on their actual three months of usage.
Okay, so they can actually go below the base rate?
No, no, the base rate is the comparison, so if they've got three months in the winter, let's just say, for example, if they're averaging $100, and they're 100, let's say 100 gallons, and then all of a sudden they do 300 gallons, the difference between their, their summer water credit and their base is 200 gallons, and, and that's, that's the floor of, of that credit.
But dollar-wise, they, they can drop below what the flat rate players pay?
Yes, sure, and, I mean, their, their current rates, irrespective of the credits, have dropped below for many, many users.
Okay.
So it's, it's based on actual usage, and that's, that's obviously the disadvantage of not having a, a meter, not having Indian American Water meter in your water usage.
Okay.
And that, that was part of our concern when we were going through the rates, but it's certainly unavoidable. Thank you.
That reminded me, I, I saw a flash on how Goschen did a five-year plan for the sewer, but in, in the story, they, they provide meters to their flat rate people on request, which I found really interesting.
Sewage meters?
Well, they hook it up to their well, and that's how they do it.
Anybody else? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
All right, thank you.
Okay, don't run off, you've got things to sign, people.